We are live and ready when you are, Mr. Mayor.
All right, sounds good. My bearings here real quick. All right, we'll go ahead and it's about 3:04, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a work session on Friday, April 1st at 3:04 PM. And discussion topic today is Jackaloff Bay Dock Action Plan Options. And we'll go ahead and let the city manager take it away here.
Thank you, Mayor. So today's meeting is being held after the request from council to have a action plan for their consideration of all the various options that could be considered concerning Jackaloff Bay Dock. So a draft of those options are included in your packet. I worked with Mayor Campbell as well as Councilmember Swick, who are the two council members listed as the champions for this council priority to come up with this initial draft for the full bodies consideration. The intent of today's meeting is council's going to discuss the options. You're going to have general consensus of which option or combination of options you'd like to proceed with. And then at the April 11th meeting, you'll make a motion formally directing myself to help the council implement those options. Also included in your packet, aside from that draft, is the lease for the uplands parking lot area concerning or near Jackaloff Bay Dock, as well as an email from the borough attorney regarding service areas and relevant Alaska statute concerning service areas, because we did receive comment. Would it be possible to establish a service area in order to support Jackaloff Bay Dock? And then last in your packet are public comments that were received by the city after the meeting, the first big meeting that council had recently on Jackaloff Bay Dock. So those are also included in your packet for consideration. And so I'm happy to go over each option with the council or Mayor Campbell, if you want to address them, or Councilmember Swick, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, um, we can do it, we can do it either way there. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, clear.
Okay, yep, I'll go ahead and jump on it then. All right, option, there was four options, A, B, C, and D. Option A was status quo, and this is in the packet there. Basically, continue with minimal routine, routine maintenance of the dock, given the dock's current condition. It's forecasted the maintenance costs and needs of the dock will increase over time. And then also continue with minimal enforcement from the harbor master and Saldobia Police Department Chief. So a couple of things on the notes. This option assumes liability and risk for the city, given the dock is uninsurable for vessels greater than 27 feet for use of the dock. And then in the condition assessment of the dock, the dock is estimated to have three to five years remaining, but most likely less than than three, given its current state. So that was option A. I don't know if anyone had any questions, or if you just wanted me to go over all four of them, and then we can get into into some discussion.
Why don't you just go through all four of them, then we'll come back to it.
All right, sounds good. Option B was the city determines, given the liability and the council's fiduciary responsibility that is not in the city's best interest to be responsible party for the Jackaloff Bay Dock and remove the dock. So steps in option B would be as soon as possible, remove the dock. Dock removal would occur in a couple of phases, phase one, remove the floats, phase two, remove the pilings and restore the site. Estimated cost for the third party to decommission the dock would be about $85,000, possibly using some in-house resources. Time and equipment could cut down that cost. A couple of notes of interest on that, the city had received permission from DNR to remove the float sections of the dock by the most applicable methods necessary with without the required use of a permit. And then per DNR, the the city would need to submit a reclamation plan for how the pilings would be removed, the site restored to its original state. And then the city would also need to enter into a reclamation agreement with DNR. Second half of that is floats, the city has also received permission from the US Army Corps to remove the floats. They'd need to be removed to the uplands above the high tide line, or if taken by individuals or another entity. They could not be simply placed in navigable waters without an Army Corps permit. So that's, so it's not as simple as just saying, hey, come get them. You know, there's a little more to that. They would have to be physically removed from a navigable water unless there is a permit in place. And then a couple of things under there, removal replacement of piles, you know, utilizing vibratory or impact hammers would likely impact endangered species. So there's a consultation process, which is obviously a little, little drawn out. And then, so that, that could be a little problematic on timing. And then if the location of piles and floats are the same as the existing alignment, a nationwide permit and maintenance would likely be appropriate, would be the appropriate permit option. So if, if the dock, if the dock alignment was to be changed, that would likely fall under a that would likely fall under a letter of permission, which is still a relatively short process. So obviously, whether we remove it, or if we were to make some changes to the configuration, there's going to be a little bit of work within permitting in the US Army Corps. Corps requires the dock is maintained in a safe manner and does not become a hazard to the public. Also important to ensure that the existing structure is either removed, repaired, or reconstructed to ensure navigability of the water body is maintained. So, and then per Alaska DOT, the city may remove Jackaloff Bay Dock and still qualify for a tier one harbor grant funding in the future. And then the city, in lieu of having a dock, would consider working with the state to install a boat launch ramp or mooring buoys. So that's option B, a little more involved, obviously. And so, and I'll give a little more, you know, down the road here, as you know, as we get into further discussions, my thought process. But so far, option A, status quo, option B, remove the dock. And then option C, sell or lease Jackaloff Bay Dock. Steps involved with that as soon as possible, the city would issue an RFP to lease or sell the dock as is. If no proposal submitted, the city would reevaluate options A, B, and D. And then, so notes, notes of interest on that, the city would need to first make a motion directing the manager to proceed with the lease of the tidlands under the Jackaloff Bay Dock. And if the city could sublease those tidlands to another individual. So keep in mind, we still have not executed the lease on the tidlands. It's, it's approved, they're ready to go, but we have not executed that lease. If there was a successful proposal received, the state would have to approve of the dock's transfers slash lease and possibly the sublease of the tidlands. So that's one more option to consider. And then, and then the final that we came up with, option D, Saldobia. City, the city determines that is within the city's best interest to be the responsible party for Jackaloff Bay Dock and determines that dock replacement is the best approach. Steps on that, the dock would remain as is, the city would continue with minimal routine maintenance and explore the option of installing bullrails to help increase increased safety and dock stability, city would proceed with securing tidlands lease with the state. The city would proceed with trying to secure the leased uplands. Again, that current lease expires in November of this year, 2022, and that lease is in the packet. Enable, in order to have more site control to ensure better management of the dock as well, you know, as well as maintenance to one of the main points of entry to Saldobia. The city, as of FY '22, is 156,000 remaining in deferred maintenance from when the dock was originally transferred from the state to the city. And then if the city were unsuccessful in receiving a raised planning grant, and we're waiting, awaiting award announcement in August, the city would issue an RFP to secure Grant Rider to assist the city with pursuing future marine transportation grant opportunities in September, October, 2022. Grant Rider would be paid through the remaining balance of the deferred maintenance funds or deferred revenue funds. If the city is unable to secure grant funds to assist with the replacement of the dock and no longer in a position to financially maintain the dock, or if the dock's current status deteriorates beyond minimal maintenance needs, then the city would reevaluate and go back to option B, which was, which was immediate removal. And then a couple of notes of interest on this, this option assumes liability and risk for the city, given the dock is uninsurable again for vessels greater than 27 feet. Same thing, dock's estimated to have three to five years remaining of life. And then same similar comments, we've received already permission from the Army Corps, the State of Alaska, et cetera, et cetera, to make, to make these necessary changes. So one other last note, another revenue source aside from grants or bonds are bonds, taking on additional debt for the city. During a municipal election, the Saldobia citizens could vote for the city to pursue a bond through the Alaska Municipal Bond Bank to front the legal fees and design construction costs of the dock. However, if the city is unable to pay the bond back, this, this option could impact the citizens, i.e. reduction in services or required increase in property taxes to make those bond payments. So, um, so that's the summary on options A through D for the dock. And Rachel, did you have anything else you wanted to add before we get into discussion?
No, that's great, Mayor. If there's other options that the council would like the body to consider or other amendments or changes you would like to see for options A through D, now is the chance. You have the full floor to discuss this, but we will be looking for a motion at the April 11th meeting for, for this issue. So please feel free to contribute any of your thoughts, and we'll do the best we can to answer.
Yeah, I guess we'll go ahead and, and open it up here and see what everyone's initial, you know, thoughts are on where, where we go from here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Well, I would like to thank you for putting together the, the committee of options A, B, and C, and D. And also depending, I mean, I don't know how much the council has spoke to people about in the city limits of Saldobia, what options they would prefer. Those people who I have reached out to have been in favor of keeping the Jackaloff Dock, because they see an importance to it. But they also do not want to fund the whole thing. They want to share that burden with all users out the road across the bay. To me, option A is not a choice to make. Option B has possibilities. But what we're talking about is coming up with money to disassemble what we got out there. It's answered some of the questions. And option B, the answer, the questions about the US Army Corps of Engineers, the permits required, that's answered some questions that had come up with us. And so I appreciate that. Option B, that means tearing the whole thing down and and trying to do a ramp or mooring buoys is a whole nother picture. It would also cost the city money. And I'm not sure if, if in option B, if there was to go for grants and get money to do that. Option C has option C, I'd really like to discuss with the council about the seller leased of Jackaloff Bay Dock, if there is somebody wanting to take it on. And then we have the recourse to go back to, if there are no proposals, if you go back to option A, B, or A, B, or D. D to B. Option D has the reality of of what it would take to reconstruct, getting a grant, only if we could get money to do this. And only if we can come up with a process in place that shares the burden of keeping Jackaloff Dock going. We have two leases, we, well, we've got the, we've got the Jackaloff Dock. Then we've got the land underneath that would allow us to charge for boats and usage. And now we're talking about the lease of where all the junk is, the one that's on the 55-year lease. I'm not really sure, I guess more conversation about what the, I mean, besides getting that thing cleaned up at the junkyard, but I don't, that's, that's what we need to do. Anyhow, that's just my first take on this, but I really appreciate the work that was done on this. To me, A or D to me are the ones that I would fit the constituency I've heard from. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. So I'm just making some notes here. So option B or, B or D are the, the two that you're, you're leaning towards. So, okay. Was that B and, B and D, correct, Vivian?
No, my options were option C is in Charlie, D is in Delta.
Okay, C or D, okay, thank you. Yep, go ahead, John.
Hey, I got a question about option C. And if we were to put out an RFP, how long would that process take to determine that? I mean, is that something that could be done in 90 days or less, or, or?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Kennedy, yes. So we would just need time to write the RFP, get the state's input on the RFP, and then issue it. And then it could be 30 days, set for 30 days.
And is, is there a large cost associated with that?
Just staff time.
Just staff time, okay. I guess the reason I was concerned about the time is option D, of course, we would pursue the uplands lease, correct? With option D, we would be pursuing in that plan.
Yes, that's a name.
And, and so that would be my thought, and it kind of goes back to some of the conversations I've had already is, you know, at least if we do our due diligence, I, I think we need to, I think option C is, is a, a good start.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, who else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Bobby.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. So first of, um, we can't have boats dock there over 27 feet, because our insurance, okay. So let's just say somebody parks there that's 35 feet, they come off their boat, they fall and break every bone in their body. So are we responsible for that?
Through the mayor, yes.
Okay. Um, so that's not a good thing. I kind of like option C. I do have some reservations about option D, if we pursue the uplands. I'm not sure how easy that's going to be. If we do not, I have a couple of questions about that, too. If we do not, if we are unable to get the uplands, what is going to happen down there ultimately? I know we have a right of way or an easement to the, oh, no, a right of way to the dock and an easement for parking. But only for about 10 cars, around 10 cars, from what I understand, the people I've talked to. But if we don't secure the uplands, how is that going to affect going to and from the dock if we keep it? Anybody have answer to that?
Mayor, I can comment?
Yeah, take a stab, then I'll, I'll follow up.
So Councilmember Swett, on the lease, we have a 60-foot wide right of way for the existing truck road to Saldobia is how it's written in there. So if the dock did not exist, or the dock was still there, but we did not get the uplands permit, that 60-foot right of way would still be there. So people can still drive on that to access the state tidlands, which is where the dock is.
Okay.
Yeah, and then in, in follow-up to that, then in regards to the, the, nothing would change if there, if there is a current easement from the state for a small amount of parking for, for 10 cars, then I don't think anything would, would, I'm not sure what would change there. But obviously, if we didn't, if we went, chose to go ahead and either continue to keep the dock or, or replace it, or have some sort of infrastructure there, whether it's us or anyone, without getting, without getting a hold of that uplands lease, most likely it would, it would be, you know, somewhat problematic, because then people would have nowhere to park. Now, I can't say what's going to happen with that lease in the future here. I know that the current leaseholders expressed interest into purchasing that with, with their first right refusal on the, on that lease area. So I am assuming if they're going to, you know, try to move forward with that and invest a significant amount of money, then at some point, they would prohibit people from, from utilizing that area. So from what I can see, there's been no effort to prohibit anyone from, from utilizing that. So I'm not sure what any of that thought process is out there. I just know it's been that way as long as time immemorial here. So, but yeah, so it would be problematic. I mean, people would have to park, you know, up, up along the road or across the street or somewhere, but then that gets into somebody else's property. So it would, it would most likely be problematic is the, is the simple answer.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to add to that, Vivian?
Oh, I was just going to say, yeah, I mean, right now, you know, people park wherever they park. Are you talking about if, if the lease goes into somebody else's hands? Because obviously, the gentleman who's owned it or had the 55-year lease hasn't done much of anything to the area or restricted anybody from doing anything that I'm aware of. So is it legal, or as Bobby had mentioned, there's actually 10 spaces for parking there that are dedicated? Is that correct? Is that what I heard? Do we know that for sure? And, and I'm really questioning if we want to take on another lease, that just means that we're having to monitor, maintain more area for what gain, is what I'm wondering about. But going back to that 10 parking spaces, is that, do we know that for sure?
Yeah, Vivian, no, I don't know that for sure. That was just told to me that the state does have the the easement there for some parking. The, the guy said possibly up to 10, 12 cars. And, but the exact number, I don't know. The other question I have, though, if, if that, if the uplands do get sold, will that impact us out there in any way at all? I mean, and I realize if nothing has been done forever, but as we know, times are changing, people are changing. It could very well happen. And I'm just wondering what the impact would be of that.
Well, our only legal, yeah, our only legal access, as was stated, was with, is, is there's a 60-foot right of way to and from the, the dock area. And then, and I haven't seen the, the plat where those 10 spaces are you're talking about. I'm assuming that would be from a different piece or carved out there somehow. But I mean, regardless, let's, let's put that part aside. Our legal act, anyone's legal access would be the 60-foot right of way. And theoretically, 60 feet, you shouldn't be parking in, in that right of way. So if, if anybody else chose to do anything with that and, you know, fence it or, you know, put signage on there prohibiting people from parking on it, then, yeah, it would, it would change, it would change the way, you know, how people leave their vehicles out there and stuff. So, I mean, it wouldn't, wouldn't, you know, be within our, our control or purview, but that, that's, that's the reality of it.
Okay, thanks. And so based on all that, I still think, I'm looking at all this. I had some different ideas at first, but now I'm thinking I like option C for now. Especially since we could set a timeframe or something to get that RFP, you know, not let it go indefinitely, like three months, four months, whatever, see what happens. I mean, you know, it's not like we're going to do anything right this second anyway. I think that would be a good option and then reevaluate. I think, I don't know, that's kind of what I think right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Bobby. Yep, go ahead, George.
We seem to be nibbling around the edges of what our real problem is. We, we tend to struggle between what perhaps our citizenry wants and what it's possible to give them. I don't see a reasonable path. It's going to cost us a lot of money to get rid of this thing. It's going to cost a lot of money to take care of it. I guess we've got to start looking for shortcuts in here some kind of way. I just had a thought. I don't know if it's productive or not. There's a taxi service here in town. If we could partner with them in some kind of way, help them come up with a larger sized vehicle and then get the water taxis to, to do the kind of scheduling that, that the air taxis do, not, not say, okay, we're going to run at three, four, and five, or whatever, a set time, but have times that are available to schedule. And then run the bus in accordance with that, and we have to worry about parking. Get all people out of there along with their goods and bring them back to town. So probably a better deal than, than trying to somehow come up with a way to have parking out there. The other thing I'd like to know, we haven't talked anything about a service area or some, when I said service area, I probably misspoke. I, what I was thinking of was selling a permit monthly, yearly, daily, whatever. The sticker that would go on the side of a boat to show us that it was, that they had paid a fee. I kind of like to know how many folks we could reach in a service area or in a permitting type situation and what we could charge reasonably and how much money we could raise to try to defray some of these costs. Just kind of between a rock and a hard place, I don't see any good, easy way out of this either way. But maybe there is.
Okay, thank you, George. Let's see, Jennifer Harmony?
Can I, can I chime in after that?
Absolutely.
Um, yeah, I think a service area is a terrible idea, because we're never going to you're never going to reach everybody that uses it. The only way to do that is to charge user fees, just like our own harbor. It needs to be able to sustain itself. And so the citizens in the community or of the city are not the ones that are paying for it. It'll be the users, the same thing with our local harbor. It's how many people use that that do not live in city limits? They all pay their own mortgages, their daily fees, whatever, that's how it runs. That's how Jackaloff needs to run if we decide to keep it. I'm really not opposed to selling it. Obviously, it would be great to, I don't know, say wash our hands of it, but, you know, it's one less thing that we don't need to worry about maintaining. My only concern would be, is there a way we can stipulate that it remains for public use? I mean, I'd hate to, obviously, the upland lease owners are talking about wanting to buy their property and they're the, we're the one opposing comment. So say they want to purchase the dock from us and then destroy it. I mean, that's not very good on us. I don't, is there a way to do that? Can we make it so it needs to remain public? Do we have that power?
I would say absolutely we do, and that would be negotiated through, through the terms of, of any, any lease for sale. I mean, it would, yeah, I don't, I don't know why, that'd be between two entities that are agreeing to something. Now, there may be a caveat in there. Since, you know, with the state, obviously, that they, they would have to sign off on this. But I would think that if we were going to do that, that that would be, you know, within the best interest of the state and the, and the community. So there wouldn't be objection to that.
Okay, right, because I don't, I mean, I don't want to see it go away, but if somebody else could take it on and, you know, have an easier time of fixing it and operating it, then go them. As far as parking, I mean, if we're talking about keeping it and the 60-foot right of way and the parking situation, I feel like that's, we don't need to fixate on that. If there, well, are all those cars parked there right now? Is that in the right of way? Do we know physically where it lies?
The right of way is a lateral, it's not, so it's not up and down the beach. It's, it's literally the length of turning on into Jackaloff and then to the dock. So it's not like we have, we don't have parking. we don't have parking spaces. We have an entrance and an exit. So from what I understand, from what I've seen on the parcel viewer and from what I've been able to ascertain, we, we do not have any legal right or written agreement stating that, uh, any public member has a right to park on those uplands.
Right. So, oh, I don't know. I guess I'm not too concerned about that. Obviously, it's nice to go out there and, you know, if you're just leaving for the afternoon to leave your car, but is it the worst? And you could probably get away with just leaving it up the hill somewhere if you had to, but I don't think it would be the worst thing to not have parking. It's not that hard for people to get a ride out there as much as a pain that is sometimes. But I don't think we need to really fixate on that. I don't, I feel like it's a, would be a real uphill battle to get that upland lease. I don't, and then is that something we want to deal with? I kind of had thoughts of, you know, you make it a little camping area and you have a camp post that can help do dock checks and stuff like that to save us on money. And then they stay there for free, kind of like the RV camp post does. But, I mean, that's a whole other ball of wax there. I don't know if that's something we want to deal with. Um, if we keep it, obviously, the only way to replace it would be a grant. We can't rely on anything other than that. No one is gonna be able to come up with that money. Um, are you still working on that application right now, Rachel?
Uh, through the mayor, you were saying the raise grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So regardless of what we decide, I mean, it sounds like a lot of people are kind of leaning towards option C. Would we wait until after this? Oh, well, what did you say? We wouldn't find out till August?
Uh, through the mayor, yes. Uh, I think we'd find out mid-August if we get the raised planning grant.
Okay. So I don't know. I mean, seems like we're kicking it down the road, but I don't know if that would be kind of an option to see if we qualify for that before we decide to put it up for lease or sale, or maybe, maybe people don't want to wait and we abandon this, uh, raise grant. I don't know. Would that be what would happen? Or are we gonna pursue that just for the, the, um, our harbor, since it's both? Yeah. I guess I could probably go on and on, but that's, those are my, my thoughts.
So I know we, we briefly talked about this too, Jen, and through, through email, uh, and stuff here. I, it comes, it comes down to timing. I'll, uh, let me, I'll say my comments here. Harmony, do you want to add something that I can, I can finish up with my comments? And then we can, we can go full circle here if everyone wants.
Uh, why don't you go ahead with your comments? I'm still trying to marshal my thoughts.
Okay, yeah, no, sounds, sounds good. No, and, uh, so there's a list of options here. To me, it's, it's kind of interesting because to me, the answer is, uh, it's not that one of these is, is the more appropriate one. It's that i- in my mind, it, it, it could be that all of these are, are, are the correct answer. None of them are the correct answer and, and all of them are the correct answer. So I looked at this and I, I thought a little bit. I made, I made some notes, you know? To me, it's not important. It's not important to me. And I, I mean, I, I honestly could care less if it's the city that is the one that is running that dock out there. And I thought a lot about this. It's like, we've got enough, uh, you know, on our, on our plates to deal with. What's more important to me is that there is some sort of infrastructure out there for people to access that, that area and to access, you know, Saldovia from, from out the road. Obviously, it's a, it's a huge recreation area out there along with accessing our cities. So, um, to me, it's important that something, whether it's a, whether it's a dock, you know, a series of mooring buoys, um, you know, a, a boat launch ramp. I think, I think all is, all is doable. Uh, so I, I got to thinking, looking at all four of the options. And I, I thought, okay, so for, for me, it's, it's, they all come into play, you know? And this is just my thoughts. For the remainder of twenty twenty-two, while we work through the remaining options in the short term, move forward with option A. Option A is status quo, right? I mean, we, so we have to line this whole thing out. Everyone's talked about C, but what are we gonna do starting tomorrow and the next day and the next day? So my thoughts are remainder of twenty twenty-two, status quo with option A. Uh, the second half of that, when it comes down to timing, is immediately move forward, draft and post an RFP, which is option C over the, over the next sixty days. I mean, I know Rachel's hooked up. We've got, we've got budget. She's got her, the, their, the administration staff is, is full. But let's, so reasonably over sixty days, we, we work to come up with an RFP, which is option C, information gathering, um, type of response to decide is if option C is a viable path. So that's, um, that would take about sixty days in my mind. And Rachel can obviously correct me if I'm wrong, or, you know, if she doesn't think that maybe it's ninety days. Um, and then continuing on, if option C, and this is for the rest of the year, if option C does not come to fruition, or, um, or we can simultaneously start working on option D as the preferred option, which would be the long-term replacement plan over the next three to five years. Um, so that, sorry about that. Uh, so, yeah, that's not gonna be a short-term solution. That's a, that's a three to five-year plan, you know, if, if we were able to even re, um, order, receive funding. Lots of work. We'd have to look at a realistic budget to see if the mortgage or revenue could actually support a new facility. Um, the uplands are, in my mind, would most likely be a key piece to this, to this as a discussion point. Not a deal breaker though. Um, I personally would not want, you know, to invest in a new dock if we didn't control some sort of, you know, the, the area around it. Again, not, not a deal, not a deal breaker. And then the, the final piece of that, so that's options A, C and D in that order. And then, uh, the final piece of that is option B. For discussion, set a goal date for replacement based on the remaining survey life for three to five years. And at the end of that time, if, if you're not successful in that, then you have to move forward with B. And you have to remove the dock and, and, and be done with it. Um, so I, in my mind, that's a, that's an all-encompassing plan that actually takes all four of these into, into account. Uh, it sets a tweet, you know, the council would have to decide on, on the timeline. Um, but yeah, like anything, we've talked about, nothing is fast in government. We know that. Um, and that, you know, everyone has to have the stomach for that too. So, but that to me seems like it would be in line. Um, you know, with what the constituents want. And then, and now again too, and maybe even after, as a part of that, I was just thinking about that. But, um, if, if we were to get funding for a new dock, and maybe we didn't have any art, successful RFPs between now and then, maybe we found funding for a new dock. We did the work, got the dock, and then maybe we went back out again for another RFP at that point, you know? It might be a little too daunting for some people to, to look at a dock replacement plan and go and move forward that, move forward with that. But, yeah, that would, in my mind, give us some time, uh, to develop a, a, a very comprehensive, detailed timeline and action plan so that everyone in the public knew what, you know, the direction we were moving and know that, all right, within three years, four years, if we're not successful, that dock's going away. If someone in the private, you know, private sector, sector wants to come up with funding or a plan to help us out or do better, then fantastic. But that's, those are my thoughts on it. All right, Harmony, you want to go?
Sure. Well, so, I mean, yeah, those were the thoughts I was trying to marshal. I feel like all of these options kind of, they almost hamstring us. I feel like you hit the, the nail on the head with what I was getting, looking to say. I think it's, um, like, I, I do have a question. Do we, did you guys already state, um, what our deadline is to reach out to the state and express our interest in the uplands before it's just is out of our power to pursue those?
Uh, through the mayor, council member Peyton, uh, no, council hasn't given any direction to pursue the uplands lease. So, uh, if you decide to go with another option besides D, you could amend it to say that we also want it to, we also want to direct the city manager to explore with the state the possibility of the city securing the uplands.
Okay, so I guess from my understanding of the situation, and I have not had the time in this last couple of weeks to put a lot of, um, I don't know if you can hear my child in the background. Sorry about that. But, um, I haven't had a lot of time to designate to, to chasing down the facts of this upland lease. Um, but from what I understand, if the, the current leaseholders do pursue the right to purchase that property, they purchase the property, it goes away from, from state ownership. It becomes a private parcel. And then this, this city, even though we hold the, the title lease, we essentially lose out on the opportunity to have any type of agreement in the future barring some sort of, um, more expensive, uh, residential purchase of that area. So I guess that's me working out, um, I think it's important to take the uplands into account. I don't think we should just say the city doesn't have a lot of money right now. We're trying to offboard our expenditures. Um, but I don't think that, like the mayor said, it's a deal breaker to not be able to get that piece. I do think it's worth pursuing the option of the upland lease. And maybe it looks, looks like, maybe S E T is interested in pursuing the upland piece and we, you know, work out a deal with them where, you know, we will sublease this parking lot area. Um, in order to maintain this service that has been here for however long. Um, I don't know. I just, I don't, I don't want us to go forward kind of in a panic of what our budget looks like and just wash away that area. Um, I think I agree with the mayor on the rest of it. The way, I, I'm not, I'm not leaning towards any of these options as they are currently laid out.
Yep. Okay, go ahead, Bobby.
Yeah, um, so I have to say, I, I really like the way you laid it all out. Um, kind of rethinking it all. I, I too thought this wasn't gonna be something that we could just decide on, you know, all of a sudden and say, oh, well, let's do this and we're gonna do away with it or we're gonna keep it. It's gonna be kind of a long-term deal, at least a few years. But I do want to say something about the uplands. Um, I think the uplands are, I think it's something we need to look at. I think we need to keep it in mind for the future plan of that area out there. Um, whether or not we can get the uplands, that's a whole nother story. But I think we need to be looking at the potential for future growth out there. Um, for a really nice area, um, that we could possibly have out there. Um, so that being said, um, yeah, that's all I've got to say, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yep, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, I think, um, I, I think with, with, without any question, there's a process out of necessity that we move forward. If we choose to do option C, then we do need to consider what are we gonna do in the meantime? Well, then we have to do what we've been doing, which is the status quo, but taking care of some things. We've got a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars to help with some things. So you laid it out very well, Mr. Mayor. And I think, um, that's the avenue to go with. If somebody could clarify with me, I've heard the fifty-five year lease that's coming up in November with Mr. Billings. Are we hearing that he, that the state is selling it? Or are we just talking that they're leasing it again? Can somebody clarify? I've heard the word ownership and lease. So which is it?
Yeah, we had seen, and Rachel, you can chime in, but we had seen, uh, that one of the shadies had responded in, excuse me, in an email that they were uh, interested in exercising their, their option for first right of refusal to, I believe, purchase the property. That's the way I understood it. But Rachel, is that, is that how you understood it as well?
Uh, yes, it sounds like they would like to purchase the land. And in looking at the lease document that's in place, it says, the less see upon the expiration of the lease or the prior termination thereof will be allowed a preference right to re-lease the lands therein if all other pertinent factors are substantially equivalent. And the lease does not require public auction. The preference rate holder shall exercise this right within thirty days before the expiration of the lease. Uh, but then there's other clauses in the lease document itself that talk about what the condition of the land or the property lease needs to be maintained as. And I don't know if this would hold in place if, uh, say the city submitted interest in the uplands, uh, because there could be the ability to determine that the current less see did not meet the terms of their lease and should not be granted a first right of refusal.
Okay, um, thank you. The, um, yeah, so it's not a deal breaker, has been said by a few, our mayor and several council members. Not a deal breaker if we, to me, also, if we don't get that uplands. Does it have future, possible future to it for the city? Perhaps. But again, we need to remember that what does the city have to work with? We've only got so much to work with. And, um, do we, you know, futuristically, twenty years, would it be a great thing to have? Maybe, but during this time, this next ten years or fifteen years, we need to remember where the city is at financially and where we're trying to just take care of what we have within ourselves. So, um, I, I think we can look at option A, B, C and D, take components of parts of it and move forward with a, uh, uh, actual plan for X amount of years to get where we want to be, where we think we want to be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vivian. Uh, anyone else with any additional comments before we go to the public?
Mayor, I have some comments.
Yeah, you bet.
Uh, so just listening to what the council was saying, I quickly read through the lease document and I did not see mention of guaranteed parking spaces in here. That doesn't mean that there isn't any. Maybe there's an amendment to the lease that the state didn't send me, but this is the only document they provided me with for what's in place out there. So as far as I can tell, uh, the only non-leased area is the sixty-foot right-of-way that connects us down to the tidelines. Um, council member Swick brought up the public purpose. And, uh, being able to, let's see here, I have a lot of windows open. Public purpose of the dock as well as transferring. So in the transfer agreement that the city signed with the state in two thousand and eight in order to get the dock, there's two clauses that could relate to that. First one, it's, uh, no subsequent transfer. It says, the city agrees covenants and warrants that it shall not transfer title to or control of the harbor facilities without the prior written approval of the state. The city further agrees covenants and warrants that any transferred title to or control of the harbor facilities without prior written approval of the state will be void and of no effect. So that's the first clause. And then the second one is public purpose. Upon conveyance of the state's interest, the city shall operate and maintain the harbor facilities for the use and benefit of the public. In the event the city fails or ceases to administer, maintain and operate the harbor facilities as public facilities, title shall revert to the state, only if the state wants to reassume it. So those are just a couple items on there. And of course, as the mayor said, the city could put a stipulation in a lease or sales agreement that it has to be maintained for public purpose. Uh, but that could be tricky. And if someone wanted to make a business out of it, what ceilings or rates would the city want to put on there that could complicate someone trying to make a business? And then also, say we lease the dock to somebody and then there's a catastrophic failure of it and then they have to take it out. You know, then it puts the city in an interesting relationship with the tenant where is there a stipulation that forces them to replace the dock and what that could look like? So, definitely a lot of legal research needs to be done on the potential sale or lease of the dock. And then, uh, council member Nathan was curious about profit when it comes to the dock and selling stickers or getting mortgage rates. And the harbor master had provided the council with a guess or, like, you know, an educated guess of what that could look like. And so for, um, revenue, based on a fee schedule for Jackaloff Bay Dock, the total that we were looking at was six thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars, assuming fifty daily transients, eight monthly transients, eight six-month transients and three annual. Eight hundred and thirty dollars, assuming fifty daily transients, eight monthly transients, eight six month transients and three annual. So of course, that's just based on. It's difficult to enforce out there. You can't have cameras out there because I've been told the signal isn't strong enough to have um, web presence. Uh, do we want to have our city staff outside of city limits? Monitoring that area all the time, so. Um, this seems like a reasonable. Uh, guesstimate for what kind of revenue implementing a fee, fee schedule out there could look like because. It's hard to say who would pay and who wouldn't. And then to respond to council member Rojas with option B. Um, the city does have a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars that could be used for demolition of the dock. And in that option, the council could say, well, we want to go with option B. But then while it's removed. We can pursue tier one funding because the dock doesn't need to be there in order for us to get that, and then. If we get tier one funding and we find another granting agency to make a match, then we could be looking at option D, but I think. For the council and having this discussion, a really important factor is. Um, getting your input on, do you think it's the city's best interest to be the? Responsible party for the dock? And if so, then that kind of answers the question for you as to what option you want to take. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Rachel. Appreciate, appreciate that. All right, any additional comments before we see if there's anyone from the public that wishes to weigh in? Okay. All right, Heidi, do we have anyone um, either in the audience or online that wishes to comment on the subject today?
I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Everybody's working, I guess. I'm just making a couple notes here. All right, well, um, yeah, we'll bring it back to council then. Uh, we've obviously heard a, everyone's um, positions where they're at. And then uh, with some follow up from the city manager as well. And I guess, yeah, I mean, looking at the series of options that are before us and the way. That we, we've all laid it out, it looks like there's a lot of um, of interest in. You know, in, in option C, which is the R F P. And I guess it just comes down to, to the simple answer, you know, like uh, the manager just asked, is, is it? Is it within the city's best interest to, you know, to, to keep the, keep the dock, um. You know, in the long, I guess, in, in the long, there's in the long run and, and or in the short run, you know, we've, again, we've got, we're going to assume liability, we're going to assume risk. Um, so we've got to, we've got to kind of. Answer a couple of these, a couple of the simple questions here on um, on what we want to do. I guess we can start, start with that one, just not in any particular order, but see. Does the council have any interest in keeping the, you know, the, the dock? As is. You know, status quo for, for now, or would we, you know, are we thinking we'd rather uh, remove it right now? You know, regardless of any of these, these other options that, that we're thinking. Um, and if anyone, you know, wants to approach us in a different way, let, let me know, but yeah, we gotta. We need to kind of methodically work, work through the question and answer just to see what we come up with here.
Mayor Campbell.
Yeah, my job.
The reason I mentioned C initially is because I seen that. Maybe if we were to be able to submit an R F P to sublease the dock or sell it. Maybe we could get out from under the cost to having to remove it. That was the biggest thing that I was looking at. I do like the, the three to five year plan with A. Uh, C, D, and then B, you know. Um, ultimately, I, I think I've shared with most everybody where I think we're going to be, but. But uh. Um, that's why I was looking at C is because we could save the money. The seventy or eighty thousand dollars it's going to cost us to remove the dock. That's why I felt that way. Um, but at the same time, I don't really have any. Um, I, I don't have any, you know, I'm not. I'm not emotionally attached to the dock out there. I think it's, but I think it's in the interest of the city to see that. Somebody manages that out there in the best interest of the peninsula, the, the neighborhood and everybody involved. You know, so um, I just don't want to see us lose that as an access point for the entire community or the state. I don't know that the city is the one that needs to be the manager of it, though.
Yep, understood. All right, thanks, John.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, um. I totally agree that I don't think the city needs to be the overseer of Jackaloff. Um, when we look at our budget, we look at what's. The city employees are trying to accomplish. We've got a lot going on. Um, Jackaloff has been sitting out there. Um, as a little entity that didn't require too much work until it became to the point it is now. Um, so I, I, yeah, I would love if someone else would take it over. And, and then the business that goes through there, so although we could still have the option of people using it, you know, whether, if weather comes up, they could come in and get out of the weather. Or getting in and out in case of a medevac, those options are what are important to the residents of Saldovia. Mainly, I always think of medical, getting it out of town just in case you can't get out another way. And the other thing is if you're coming back from home or your destination was get back to Saldovia, well, you can pull into. Into Jackaloff and be protected, but is it our responsibility as an entity to provide that service? No, I don't think so, not what we don't have. Uh, when we're having a hard enough time maintaining what we do have. Um. And really, when I start going through option B. I'm kind of reading through it and trying to see, okay, what does that actually mean? Well, it means we're putting up money and using money upfront to take down dock. Uh, the, the pilings and we've got a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars and there's a quote of eighty five thousand dollars to remove. Decommissioned part of the dock. Um, and then we've got the. The wording of, of boat, possibly a boat launch ramp and mooring buoys. Well, mooring buoys, somebody can tie up if they get. In the weather on the outside, they can come up and more up. Um, if it's blowing like a son of a gun in Jackaloff, well, that's another story, as it always is, but. Um, to answer your question, and I think the, the city manager did a great thing in putting us on the spot and saying, what is? Uh, what, what is our responsibility as a city and putting that forward? No, I don't think it's our responsibility to maintain. Because even if we make six thousand dollars a year and it could be more, it could be less, we still have. Our city employees going out doing maintenance work, maintaining it, collecting funds. And it's ten miles out the road. Um, it's just, it's the, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Vivian. Yeah, and I, I mean, I agree on the, on the dollars part. I think six thousand is not. Even close to, to covering what we need. I mean, there would have to be a porter passenger fee. I mean, if you can get. You know, twenty or thirty thousand people that come across that dock, you know, over the course of a six, six or eight month period or. Throughout the year and you can get a buck a head or something, then, you know, if you can get forty or fifty thousand dollars a year in revenue, that's a whole different story. Uh, and that's, that's honestly what it would take, even if a private entity. Were to, you know, take that over. I mean, six thousand, there's no, there's not going to be any interest. For, for six thousand bucks, you know, and then you're not going to make any money off that, so. Um, obviously, we're not in the business to make any money, but we have to cover our costs, so um. All right, yeah, thank you, thank you, Vivian. Anyone else, uh, you know, to answer the, the basic question, whether or not, you know, they, they. It's, it's just within the city's best interest to, to, you know. Maintaining and, and keep the dock moving, moving forward.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Bobby.
Yeah, I'm not going to make a comment because Vivian pretty much said everything that, um, I was going to say. Other than I'm just going to reiterate, um, you know, financially. It's just. Not a good thing and it's just not something that, um. We should be responsible for because we can't be. But. Then there's, that's not just, there's a whole lot of other things that go along with that, you know, from the emotional to. From emotional to financial, so. I certainly don't know. What the right answer is.
Then let me, let me just throw this out there then, you know, in the, sorry, I'm just, I. Um, got the crud here. Um, getting over, um, you know, getting to the, the crux of this and a couple of things, we. Hearing the, uh, the interest in, you know, option C about an R F P, I guess. Can we get a consensus that we think? We think in our, moving forward with an R F P would, would at least be a, a first step in the process here? I mean, there's two things in my mind. We, we've got to figure out immediately. If we have the stomach to keep the dock as is for, for now, for a short term. Um, and or pull it at a given date. I mean, that, so that, whether that's. You know, after the summer, before the summer, I mean, that, that we have to come up with a plan. And then in the meantime, do we go out with, with an R F P? Um, so there's a couple, couple pieces that we have to make a decision on one, one way or another.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead Harmony.
Have, uh, Rachel, have we? Reached out to S V T and talked to them specifically about? Um. About an R F P, if they're interested in pursuing something like that, or if they're willing to work with this, um. Well, I guess, yeah, go ahead on the R F P question.
Uh, through the mayor, council member Peyton, I had a, a great conversation. With Crystal Collier about uh, Jackaloff Bay Dock, but it was in reference to the. Uh, big public meeting that the city had a little bit ago in March. And just saying, you know, if, if the. Council, if the Saldovia Village Tribal Council had any interest in the dock or wanted to partner with the city or work with the city, that would be a great. Uh, time to receive those comments, and we didn't receive comments. Uh, from S V T, but I have reached out to them to let them know that the city would be interested and. I'm hearing it from them on, on this matter.
Okay, I guess, um, for the sake of moving forward tonight, I would be um, in favor of option C.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Harmony. Anyone else on um, on, on option C and then, um, and then obviously. Okay, let's, let's even simplify this. So, because we're not, we're not making a lot of headway here. What are we going to do with the dock in the? Very short term, let's say from now till the end of the year here, what we have to come up with this, are we going to? Status quo or are we going to remove it? I guess those are.
Mayor, Mayor Campbell, Mayor Campbell.
Yep, go ahead.
I would be, I would be okay with status quo. Um, at least until we can see where we're at with this R F P.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead Vivian.
Would agree with that. I think we have a responsibility to our constituents and those that have said they feel the heart or the dock is important. Uh, and I think keeping it status quo and doing the repairs we can with the money we have towards Jackaloff singly. Um, and, and hope that we can get an R F P and somebody is interested in it, or we go back to the drawing board and make decisions. Again, thinking if we actually got enough funding for option D. And we ended up with a new harbor, a new dock, some version of a dock out there. At that point, we've got a brand new structure. And at that point, a brand new structure doesn't require much in maintenance or, or upkeep. And so we're not looking at a lot of overhead other than an employee coming up with an employee situation. If we go that option, but for now, I think status quo and keeping it safe. Um, and then on Monday, we'll make a determination, right? Today, we're not making a determina- determination, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and it would be on the eleven, meeting on the eleven. When we would uh, come up with, so we have a little time to come up with a few, uh, you know, a, a number of uh. Options for, uh, for a formal motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, so far I'm hearing that, you know, status quo, kind of what, what we talked about steps here. Status quo in the short term, looking for an R F P, um, you know, in the, in the um, near future, and again, we can work with staff on that. Sixty, ninety days, whatever that takes. Um, and then, and go through that process to see if there's anyone that's even remotely interested from the private sector. Um, you know, or another uh, government entity or whatever the case may be to. Um, that has the, the appetite for, for doing something out there with this, this facility. Um.
But. We want to make sure that our city manager, I heard us correctly talk about early that you would continue with the raised grant.
Yeah, so that was, and that was my next, my next piece to that, so. Talking about option D, do, and we, I don't think, I don't think that, you know, we have to. Uh, and maybe it's a hybrid, you know, so option D. So we had, we had A and C, A status quo, C R F P, and then the next one was D, which was um. Decide that it's in our best interest to be responsible party. And, and you know, and determine that dock replacement is the best, best approach. Maybe there's not consensus on, on that. Maybe that is. You know, in the mean, in the short term, continue. This year to uh, to move forward with, you know, with any, any grants that might be available to us. I mean, maybe this is a two step process and we're not going to solve all these answers now. Maybe we come back in the fall. After we've, you know, after we've concluded the R F P process and then. And then that's our next step. Okay, we've made it through, you know, we made it through status quo, we made it through R F P, there's either interest or no interest. Now we are coming up into the winter again and we, we know we're likely to. You know, the dock's going to take some, some punishment. Do, do we need to pull it before it's too late in the season? Um. You know, so that, that's my thoughts. I'm just, I'm just kind of brainstorming here as we move through this process. It's not, it's not a simple one that we're going to have all the answers for tonight.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I definitely am for keeping it. Um, I don't think we're at any point. Now where we should be discussing pulling it, um. Or even putting any kind of date on that. That we have to meet, otherwise we have to pull it, um. Yeah, I mean, we're. I think we've kind of laid out a, a plan. You know, we have a direction that we'd like to go and, you know, hopefully things will unfold. Nicely, um. I know that the whole, is it? In the city's best interest is very. Black and white and it's not a black and white issue, um.
True.
You know, maybe that. Should have been a question. At the time of. Leasing it or purchasing it, but we're beyond that and it's not. It's easy to say no, it's not in our best interest to keep it, but it's also very. Uh. I, I don't. I guess I will say irresponsible. Um, and just a huge disservice to. Not only the community, but also to the city itself to make that decision, um.
Jennifer, that, so that, that's why I'm saying too, maybe, maybe it's not appropriate yet at this time, right, to, to make that. I mean, not kicking the can down the road, but.
Right.
Out of all these, we, we know we've got, so two plans, let's take the first one. Keep it status quo, I think we all agree on that. Let's, let's try the R F P process to see if there's anything. And then that's going to force our hand here. After the fall, uh, you know, after we get through this budget, we've got another whole looming crisis here with our, our budget process here. So, but this gives us a little bit of time, a little more time to sort itself out, and then we come back in the fall and we know. We're going to be up against some, some harder questions at that point. Uh, you know, continuing either to continue with status quo. Um, and, and assume all the risk that goes with that. And that maybe that's, you know, maybe the council has, has got that appetite and that, and that's fine. So, um, but yeah, I know, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying, saying definitely. Rachel, do you think the sixty to ninety days, would that give you enough time? To uh, to cut, to come up with uh, with uh, an R F P?
Yes, I will need to run it by the city attorney, so I guess to go back on what council member Kennedy asked, it would be staff time and city attorney time. Uh, but we would. Draft the R F P. Have the attorney review it, and so let's just say we did ninety days from today. That would be the end of June. I think that's reasonable, so July one, the start of the fiscal year, we could have an R F P or right around.
And again, I don't think the, the R F P needs to be super complicated because I think a lot of it is going to come down. We can have some, some general stipulations in there, you know, and then of course, if the, you know, and the reason for the ninety days, everyone's because we've got, you know, we have. because we've got, you know, we have a a number of meetings already stacked up. And then we obviously, I think council is probably going to want to look at the draft before it, you know, before it gets put out on the street. But I think we just need to come up with some basic consensus points in there. What what the council and the manager would like to see, you know, as as our, you know, brainchild, if you will, going forward. But I think there's going to be a whole lot of it open to negotiation. You know, if so, if there was an interested party, then, you know, then then the, then the, then the process begins for negotiating all the terms of of the proposal. So, yeah, that's in my mind, that's, that's kind of how that process would work.
Absolutely.
All the legal Ts and Cs, if you, if you would, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one more question. So are we going to continue to proceed with the lease for the Tidelands regardless of what we're ultimately going to do?
Did the mayor, I don't know if there's a timeline on when we need to finalize the Tidelands under the dock, because we have an entry authorization, and they're, they're already, the state is already charging the city as if we have a lease. But there is that timeline with the Uplands, because that's November of this year.
Okay.
Yes, we could remain status quo then on the on the Tidelands. Is that, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I don't, I can confirm with the state, but I don't, I think because we have the entry authorization, they're kind of treating us as if we're in a pseudo lease already, but I can confirm that with the state.
Okay.
And could we, if we have to, sublease those Tidelands? Do we know that?
Uh, we don't know that, but that's one of the things in option C is exploring that with the state. If they, if they would allow us to do that, if we had a lease with them.
Okay.
Tidelands lease.
Thanks.
Okay, any other additional comments or thoughts here this evening?
Mayor, what I'm hearing from the council is to proceed with option A and option C kind of simultaneously. And then Councilmember Peyton had asked about the Uplands. So does council want the city to do anything concerning the Uplands at this time?
I, I, I think in my mind, and we can get a little bit of comment from the council, but I think it would be worth exploring, just just do some some fact-finding on on how that process works and what what the options are going to be available. You know, maybe from DNR to to the current, maybe if we could get some information out of DNR, how that process is going to work, you know, if there's a first right of refusal, would, you know, when and if would be their deadline for exercising that? And then how would that work for any other entity that was interested in in pursuing that that lease? And maybe a, you know, a timeline. So not a ton of work on your part, but more of a, of a, you know, a Q and A type exchange with DNR. And then, and then something back to council on that.
Okay, so I'm hearing, so this, for the April 11th meeting, you guys will discuss this again and make the formal motion, but I'm hearing option A and C simultaneously while directing the city manager to follow up with DNR to ask about the process for this lease that's set to expire in November of 2022. Specifically, what would occur if there's interest from another organization? How does first right of refusal work in a timeline, an essential timeline of when we would need to submit our interest for the state's consideration?
Correct. Correct. Any objections from anyone on on that, that concept? And then I can work with either a couple of council members or the manager to come up with a some, a couple of specific motions for for our April 11th meeting.
Mayor Campbell.
Yep, go ahead, John.
No objections for me.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, I have no objection to exploring the the lease of the Uplands. And I'm sure we're not going to get it for $310, as was written up 55 years ago.
Right.
Now, that's a whole nother story. But I have no objection to exploring what the, what the possibilities are. And again, to me, it's not a game changer, but I know.
And I agree. I think we're just looking for a little, little bit of Q and A, fat, you know, some information, a little more information for the council to at least consider. And then, you know, we can make a decision when that, when that time comes.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Vivian. All right, George, Harmony, I saw thumbs up from you. George, Jennifer, Bobby, any objections from you guys on on moving forward in this direction?
None from me.
Mr. Mayor, I would just, I'm, I'm a little concerned about all of this. We're talking about exercising three of the of the parts of the plan, spending money on all three of them, and then having a chance of ending up having to dump the thing anyway. Also, we're kind of carelessly talking about the risk to the city involved. One, one pretty good personal liability claim would would really put us in a, in a hole out there. It's, we've been very lucky up to now.
Yeah, I guess my only response to that would be, I mean, unless it was absolute negligence on our, on our part, which I, which I don't think it would be. I mean, that, that for the most part, you know, the 27 and under, you know, comes with the same inherent risks that we have in our, you know, in our current harbor down there. You know, if someone coming off slips, trips, falls, that, you know, that's going to be anywhere on 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 city property. Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not a simple answer, and I'm not, you know, trying to to make make light of it. But yeah, there is, I mean, there's a certain level of risk that we assume just by operating a city, you know, from day to day and having any property and infrastructure, you know, in in place. And yeah, you know, wishing and hoping, those are, those are not good plans. But yeah, we have to do a little bit of due diligence, you know, signage, making sure of that, you know, in our day-to-day checks when we are out there that we don't have, you know, missing boards, you know, nails sticking up, et cetera, et cetera. Again, we need to make sure we're, we're, we're meeting at 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 least the minimal standards for making sure that everything is safe for for the public out there. Okay, well, since it's a work session, generally, you know, George's voiced some concerns, and I think we all share those concerns. But I think generally for tonight's discussion, it's a work session, no formal action. Rachel, your synopsis there, we can, we can plan on moving forward in that direction for the April 11th meeting, which will be the formal meeting, the formal action. And then again, at that time, that's when the formal vote will take place. If anyone, you know, certainly anyone can can bring forth a motion at that time. I will work with a couple of council members to come up with, you know, with the motion based on what we came up with tonight. And then again, there can be amendments, there, we can have all kinds of stuff, but we'll try to keep it as as simple as possible to keep this process moving here. So appreciate everyone's comments, feedback, and any other final closing comments before we wrap it up tonight? Okay, Rachel, did you have anything for, before we wrap it up?
No, that answered my questions, and I just wanted to say to the harbor masters and the audience, I just want to ask, do you have any comments you would like to make, Leila?
No, this was, I don't think this sounds working at all.
I don't know if you folks could hear, but she said today was a good meeting and that, no, no comments.
Okay, yep, no, that's, that sounds good. All right, well, we will, yeah, appreciate everyone's comments, and then hopefully this will get out. The public will see what we're doing, and hopefully we'll have a little bit more input at the at the meeting on the 11th. So other than that, yeah, no formal action tonight. We've got our work session, budget work session on Monday, April 4th at 3:30. And then the next regular council meeting will be Monday, April 11th at 6:00 PM. And we will go ahead and adjourn. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And we see you later.
Bye-bye.